Okay, anybody else?
Baldi. Oh, Baldi, and then, oh, okay, these are the same ones.
He already did. You can get started.
Okay, so what does that give me?
Nine.
Nine, okay. I'm gonna start from the beginning. A few years ago, the city council voted specifically on tobacco shops that they could not move their business as of 2023 in January. They could not sell their business, they could not leave their business to anybody. Now, when somebody opens up a business, that is an investment. I don't know if any of you have a business or ever been in business, but you do not put your money into a business that at the end of life or during your life you cannot sell to get your money back after you have already made it very famous within your town. That's what you do. So right off the bat, it looked to me that you were after these businesses. And on the agenda, it even said to phase out tobacco shops. Phase out. Okay, now, what did these people do to you? They didn't even get public notice, even on a water bill. There was only thirteen shops at that time. And this is the first time I have ever seen in all the city councils that I have been involved with that did not give public notice to businesses that directly affected them. The next thing happened at the same time the council is voting on marijuana facilities. Okay? And next to, the first one they voted for was next to a church which had children that come there for daycare. That was just like it didn't matter. So I thought that was kind of weird. Then, all of a sudden, it comes on the agenda that you want to ban certain flavors inside of the tobacco stores and also any other store that sells any kind of tobacco. At the same time, no one even thought to have a study session to find out how it would affect these businesses. How does it affect them? Once you buy something, tobacco, you have to pay for all the taxes and fees, and you have to buy the product. You gave them thirty days from the day that it was on the consent calendar to get rid of all their goods. No way they could do that. How in the world are they supposed to pay these bills? Also, at the end of the year, they have to pay taxes to you folks on items they did not sell. Anything that's left over in your store, you pay taxes on afterwards. So not only do they had to buy the product, not get their money back, pay the fees and taxes through the chain for tobacco, plus at the end of the year, they gotta pay you. Now, these people have leases. Did anybody ask them? Do we have leases? Anywhere between three thousand one hundred to five thousand dollars a month. So if they go out of business, they still have those leases. They still have bills to pay. Now, just think about if this happened to you. How in the world would you buy all these products, pay all the taxes and fees, and have to pay taxes on something you didn't sell at the end of the year to boot? And also, you raised the price of what they do have in their store more than the other communities. So does that make sense? So what it looks like to me is, why would anybody go to their store at all? First of all, they don't have the product that you can get in Pittsburgh or other places. And what they do have left, you guys raised the price. So you're running them out of business. Now, how are they supposed to pay all their bills? How are they supposed to pay their houses? How are they supposed to feed their kids? Oh, but I forgot it was all about the kids. But yet, it's all right in the city of Antioch to approve six marijuana-type facilities, and some of them have candy. Candy, marijuana candy, that's okay because, see, the kids are, we're afraid the kids might smell menthol or flavored tobacco that smokes, and they might want to smoke it or get hooked. But if it's candy with marijuana in it, gee, we don't have to worry about that. Really? If, how does a parent talk to their kids if you are legalizing something that is illegal? How do you do that? And it's candy. Do you know if your kid is eating marijuana candy? They could be sitting watching cartoons, you wouldn't know it. But if they were smoking a cigarette of any kind, you definitely would know it. So there's something wrong with this picture. Now, what needs to be done here, this has to be re-agendized. There has to be a study session to figure out what you have done. This is a taking. You don't do this to businesses. All of a sudden, how would you like it? Oh, let's tell the plumber. Guess what, plumber? You can't no longer fix toilets, can't fix sinks. You can't do this, you can't do that. What are you guys talking about? Now, the state of California voted on SB 793. It was put on hold. It has to do its tobacco ban. It was put on hold by the Attorney General, by the Secretary of State, by the Governor of California. It's on the ballot in November. Why couldn't you guys wait to let the voters vote for this? Who put you ahead of the voters? Who put you ahead of the state of California? We're a general law city. Remember the oath? You're not supposed to make laws that are more stringent than what the state has. Right now, it is not the law. So what are you doing? The people of Antioch, you've got customers too. Do you realize now, there's no gas price that they could afford? They have to go to the next city. And also, while they're there, they'll do their shopping. That's the way we planned Antioch. All the stores were supposed to be there for everybody to shop at everything they needed. Well, you go to Pittsburgh, you go to another town, you're gonna do all your shopping there. Also, we have people who are disabled. These are customers that live in close proximity to these places. They don't have cars. They have to walk. Not only did you raise the price for them, but there's no way that they can go all the way now to another city without paying money. Do you realize what you have done to this community? Do you realize how many people are upset? And don't use the kids because it's contradictory. You make yourself sound stupid. The kids, but it's okay for candy, marijuana, they get you high. Why? Because they got a guard at the door? Well, you can't walk into a cigarette store and take anything off the shelf. What do you think it is, a regular store? Everything is behind the counter. And if somebody wanted to give candy to kids, their older boyfriends, older friends, people on the street can do it anyhow. But the thing of it is, once they tasted it, they will never get that taste again, and so they're gonna want to use it. You guys are hypocritical, and you guys don't look right when you're doing this. Also, nobody can get in touch with you. You wonder why you don't have people saying anything? You don't give public notice, they try to call you on the phone. There's only a very few people who have called back. Now, even the person that's in my district never called me back. I was asked about my district. I had called that person.
I have to stop you because it's now nine minutes.
I'm sorry, but please retake this up. The public is suffering, and it's not fair.
All right, thank you.
All right, we have Mr. Hernandez up, Ralph Hernandez, followed by Pam Gupta.
You didn't yield your wife for three minutes? I guess I know where he's sleeping tonight.
Ralph Hernandez, former city council here in Antioch. I'm gonna be straight up and frank with you guys. First off, Mayor Lamar, nobody voted you as king doo-doo. Nobody voted any of you into office to be above the population, the citizens of this community. All of you elected officials, all of you department heads of the city, all of you employees of the city, you work for us. We are the bosses, okay? We are who you are supposed to serve and serve us properly, fairly, honestly, and for the betterment of our community. Not have issues that come up where one person decides the police chief can't talk to the public. You, mayor, you took over and said, "I don't want him to talk, I'm gonna talk for him." Well, how much do you really know about law enforcement, Lamar? You know, I mean, really, what do you know about law enforcement? Let the chief talk for himself. We, the public, want to hear from our department heads, from the city attorney, from the city clerk. We want to hear from each of you. We don't want you to ignore us, we, who you're supposed to represent. When we call, we want an answer, even a delayed answer. Give us a call back. But you know, my experience has been lately, I call City Hall, I call some of the council people, include you, Lamar, you, Monica, I've called you guys. You guys don't return calls. How do you run a city that way? Is it only what you in particular want, not what the public wants? I mean, really? If, if, if I'm mistaken, say so. Tell the public, really, you, the public, don't count. We're the bosses, we boss you guys. Now, there is a recall going on right now. And you know, there's a lot of talk about what needs to be done here in Antioch. Not just to recall the mayor. We're talking about looking at our elected officials. But you know one thing, which you don't know yet, but I'm telling you, there's a lot of talk about taking on the whole entire city administration as well as the operations of the city and making some significant changes which you elected people are not gonna like. What those are, I won't tell you now. You know, but one of the things, you know, they're asking me to run as a replacement candidate, they're asking other people to run. People are upset.
All right, thank you. Next person.
Pam Gupta, followed by Marissa Henriquez, Henriquez? Sorry, I'm probably not saying it right. Pam first.
All right, welcome.
Good evening, members of the city council and Mayor Thorpe. As business owners with a presence of over ten years in this community, we humbly request that you please reconsider your decision regarding the ban on flavored tobacco and the increase in cost of merchandise of tobacco products. Smoke shops and other tobacco retailers in the community, which includes several POC minority owners who have an established presence in the community, have been adversely affected. We understand the city's decision to ban certain products, but the immediate imposition of the ban without any grace period has been detrimental to small businesses around the area. We have so much inventory that we are now stuck with and cannot sell because of this new ordinance. I could go on and on about the grievances of small business owners in the community, but I think you're all well aware of them, especially given the past few weeks. So I want to take a minute and talk about who we are. We're not just small business owners. We also consist of a diverse minority population with a long-time presence in this community. We're also people who care about the people of this community, regardless of whether or not they are our patrons. We are people who look out for each other and members of this community. We are people who have offered food, temporary shelter, and a shoulder to cry on for those who frequent our establishments. We're not just merchants, but members of the community that we love and care about. We have weathered so many storms together and just went through a pandemic together that hurt us all in so many different ways. But through it all, we have remained united with our patrons and ensuring that we get through it together. So Mayor Thorpe and members of the city council, I humbly request that you reconsider recent decisions and please give the small business owners a chance to survive in this great city where hope and opportunity resides. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Marissa, followed by Richard Madison, Richard L. Madison.
Hello, good evening. My name is Marissa Henriquez, and I am a resident of Antioch. I am a tenant over at Twin Creek Apartments. And the reason I'm here today is, along with ACE, ACE is a group that helps tenants when they're unhappy with things that are going on at their, more specifically, Twin Creeks. And the reason that I'm here today is because I moved to Twin Creeks back in October of 2021, and this property is managed by FPI Management. This management group basically showed us a unit that we were gonna be renting and expecting. They showed us a remodeled unit, you know, nicely remodeled. So eventually, we ended up putting our application through, moving in. But once we actually moved in, we saw that it was completely a different story. Everything was run down, our dishwasher was not working, we did not have a washer and dryer, we did not have a painted unit even. And so now, we've been living there for a couple of months, and it seems that every time that we bring up an issue to them, there's always an excuse as to why they can't fix it, as to, you know, that our issue is not an emergency and that they're only taking emergency orders at this time. We've been told that many times, they turn off the water without notice. Like, sometimes it'll be an hour notice, and we'll get an email letting us know that our plumbing is not working, and then there's emergency water shut off. So, I mean, I don't know about you, but when I have to get to work and I only get an hour time to let me know that the water shut off, I mean, it's an inconvenience. We've brought a lot of these issues up to management, and they don't seem to care or do anything about it. There's mold growing in the units, there's ventilation issues, the, some of the doors don't work, windows don't work. It's very, very outdated. So I just come before, along with ACE, to urge every one of you to just look a little bit closely into what's going on and let us know if there's anything that we can do to equip us with, as tenants, what we can do to, you know, deal with FPI Management and hold them accountable for their actions. Thank you.
All right, we have Richard Madison, followed by Lucas Stewart Calcutta.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council, citizens of Antioch. I hate to bring up something that's an old issue, but I was, I was sitting in the home watching the last city council meeting. And this was at a time sort of where you had had that incident, where there was an involvement of driving under influence. And I, I was a little disappointed because as first citizen, right, I consider you first citizen, Mr. Mayor, that you would set an example. I think that, and then, of course, there was, I believe, council member Torres mentioned a number of F-bombs that she occasionally will drop when upset. And as a parent, I get it. I saw the video, I get it. I know that if someone or anyone were to intimidate or violate my kids, I don't know if I'd be able to maintain composure, even if I represented the city. But I kind of felt like, as I watched it, there were a number of citizens that we made excuses, right? We were, well, you know, we don't know what's going on with Mr. Mayor and his personal life. And whatever's going on, my heart goes out to you, sir. I, it does. If, in fact, there's something going on, I don't know. But my point is, is when you become a public citizen, you don't have a personal life. You represent us. And when you are a council member, you can't drop F-bombs like that, you just can't. See, when I talk to my friends who live in different states, they'll say, hey, man, where do you live? You were able to afford a house in California? I say, yeah, well, you know, I've been blessed, and I've laid roots in Antioch. This is my home, military brat. I moved all over the country, and this is where I've decided to stay. And I say, well, I'm in Antioch. They say, oh, you mean the city where the mayor was pulled over for driving under influence? Yeah. Or is that the city where the council member was dropping those F-bombs on video that we can go to Facebook and see? I was like, well, well, yeah, that's where I live. So these people that represent you, I mean, you know, maybe they had some hard times, or, I mean, I don't know what they're going through. But at the end of the day, you gotta remember, you represent us, and you have to set an example, and it's hard, and I get it. I absolutely get it. But if you cannot sit and be called the honorable, the honorable city council or the honorable mayor, guys need to make some different decisions on whether or not you need to be up there. So I don't want to make that personal, it's just that we need more from our council members. And frankly speaking, as citizens, we need to raise our expectations, right? Because if we want more, we should expect more. Thank you, guys, for listening. I appreciate it.
All right, next.
Lucas, followed by Chris Gilroy. So Lucas, followed by Chris.
Hi, good evening again, Lucas Stewart Chilcote. This is my first time in person at a council meeting since COVID. I just wanted to say it's great to see everyone in this beautiful chamber. I keep catching myself seeing how I look. I am still COVID cautious, so that's why we're the N95. But I did want to come in here tonight to, I, you know, saw the proclamations, that was wonderful. But I also wanted to recognize for our community of the Muslim faith, it's their month of celebrating Ramadan, so I just wanted to hold that. And also, for myself, I was reading a PBS article. April is Sikh Awareness and Appreciation Month. Sikhism is the fifth largest religion with more than 25 million Sikhs in the world. It was founded in Punjab region in northern part of India over 550 years ago. Sikhs have been in America for 125 years, and there are about 500,000 Sikhs, including myself, in America. Part of our faith requires us not to cut our hair or shave to honor what God has given us. The men wrap their hair in a turban or a patka like myself. My hair's not as long yet. And it's to represent outward commitment to our faith. Our local place of worship that's closest to our community, we call it our good war, is in Pittsburgh on Crestview Drive. We're having a Vissaki celebration with food in the Lungar Kitchen this weekend, so just wanted to say, please, welcome. Last time you saw me before COVID, you probably didn't see me like this with my patka or my turban, my beard. I was a clean-shaven fellow. When people see me, they're like, oh, where are you from? Well, I'm Irish, I'm from America. And I don't, I didn't grow up in a Sikh family, but I stumbled upon the faith watching an episode of California's Gold with Heel Hauser, and I fell in love. Wahi Guruji Kalsa, Wahi Guruji Fatka. Thank you.
Thank you.
Devin Williams, followed by Leslie May.
All right, nice to see you guys in person. Good evening, members of the council, Mr. Mayor Thorpe. My name is Devin Williams. I'm a member of ACE and organizer with the community group. For the past couple of months, I've been organizing and getting to know the tenants of the Twin Creeks Apartments, James Donlin Boulevard. And these members of that community are wonderful, hard-working people. And they are, if not most of all, of the 220 tenants there are very unhappy, as Marissa was saying earlier. They're stated with the FPI-managed property management group whose model, oddly enough, is grounded, a culture grounded in heart. And that could be anything but. Heart is when you show taking care of your tenants. Now, people are paying upwards of 2,000-plus a month for their units, and these are one-to-two-bedroom apartments. Most of the appliances and the cosmetics are outdated. Tenants have been demanding quality repairs or new appliances. They're paying the money, and it's not going back into them. They are concerned about mold from water damage, and these apartments should be remodeled and made habitable. FPI can use its $249.98 million to make a better home for the families that live there. And tonight, I urge the council and the mayor for better tenant protections in the city of Antioch. Residents of this community deserve better. Rent increases have been given to these tenants at Twin Creeks, and they are unjust. Tenants have given their hard-earned dollars for almost nothing in return except a faulty roof over their heads. Tenant protections like anti-harassment will limit, if not end, these abusive practices made by FPI. Rent control would stop the rent increases up to $200 for some of the tenants at Twin Creeks. When their wages aren't going up, what's gonna happen when they can't pay their rent anymore? We have an influx of homeless in the city already, and we hate to see if that increases because of these rent increases. And anti-harassment would stop these practices, I'm sorry, just cause protections for evictions would stop people from being evicted for no reason. You know, there's many stories I can tell, but I'm sure the community would have a voice in that in place of me to tell you their personal stories. But I ask you to please think about these things, and I know that there's, you know, you guys are working together, but please, try to come up with a conclusion on how you can make these protections better for tenants. During these past two hard years, we want to see a better impact. And so I'll close by saying, the fight for protections won't stop with this city, but let Antioch be the example for a better world. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, so I skipped over Chris, Chris Gilroy, and then Leslie May. So Chris. Sorry about that, Chris.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. If you'll excuse me, I have a little bit of a lisp because I have sutures in my mouth at the moment. But nevertheless, I'm here. The clock is running, so to some of my friends over here on the issue of tobacco. This, do you guys remember the Three C Shovels? Anyone remember that? Demolition Man, anybody? No? Okay. It kind of reminds me of this, and I think I understand both sides of this issue. One, we want to get something done, and we want to get something done fast. That's very hard to do in government, so I do understand the rush. I think, it's just my intuition, I think that the rush is because you guys want to get something done. I understand that. The problem is, I think that adopting what's been done in these other counties and what's been done in these other cities is adopting something that will eventually be repealed and that's flawed. I think that there is so much in it that has just been copied on over because it's easy, it's simple, and we can just pass that right through because we're copying what someone else has done, that it's going to not only be detrimental to our GDP, to California's revenue, to the city's revenue, to our small businesses, some that'll bankrupt, wages that will be cut, jobs that will be lost. It's gonna have a huge economic impact. And I have some statistics for you. You know, I own a business, a nationwide business. My clients include Pixar, the Oakland Athletics, and a president of the United States. My clients include Pixar, the Oakland Athletics, and a president of the United States of America. I've done a lot of work in my time. I've done very big things. And I started out homeless. 20 years ago, I was homeless. I was an alcoholic. I was an addict and I was hopeless. I have 20 years of sobriety this year. But I don't say that for congratulations, the greatest for that goes to God, of my own understanding. The reason that I mention that is because of these statistics that overwhelmingly, the people who smoke, especially menthol cigarettes, 93%, according to the CDC, are black, are minorities. 93% smoke started by using menthol cigarettes, 93%. $1.8 trillion is brought in in revenue for California through tobacco. $1.8 trillion per year. May I?
No, I'm sorry. I have to cut you off. Thank you. Sorry about that.
All right, Leslie May. Followed by Max Fatman Vee. So follow me, Max, Leslie.
Okay, good evening, city council members and citizens of Antioch.
Can you lower your mic, please? Because the folks can hear you.
Okay, can you hear me now?
No, you're gonna have to lean in a little more.
I would like to begin my conversation. I would like for the council to begin conversations with the board of HBCUs, historically black colleges and universities, and the southern and eastern states to come to our city and build a university. Right now, Oakland has already begun talking with one from Texas. They want to start coming out to the west and build colleges, universities for students to attend. So I would like for this city to start conversations, maybe with the board, so that we can get something like that going in our city. The second thing I'd like to speak to is that I went out to the spa on Sunday and decided to go to Safeway on Deer Valley. And the language and behavior that I saw and heard dealing with recalls and individuals was horrible. You know, I understand people saying that we need to, our representatives need to represent us, but also Antioch citizens need to represent Antioch as well. The words I see on paper, on Facebook, Instagram, all kinds of things. The words I hear on the streets are filthy. You talk about kids? Yeah, well, I have four grown kids and five grandchildren. I would not want them to hear this. One of my granddaughters, who's an adult, lives here in Antioch. She says the same thing. She's so sick and tired of it. The racist behavior and language. So people and children emulate what they see and hear in their homes. You're speaking words of hatred. You're speaking words of racism in your homes to your families. Those kids go to schools and do the same thing there. You have children committing suicide. You have children doing all kinds of things. As a mental health therapist in this city where I live and work, I see and hear it all the time. I have children crying, saying, but my mom and my daddy said if I don't, I'll be in trouble. But then the kids at school don't like me. So what I have to say about the drinking, I've done some things in my younger days. Thank God I didn't get caught. But I'm gonna tell you right now, everyone sitting in this room is not without sin. So anyone without sin, cast the first stone. Quit talking about people and talk to people and see what you can do to help them. Thank you.
We have Max Fatah, followed by Rashawn Williams.
Hi, Max Fatah, I'm an Antioch business owner for the last 25 years. I just recently invested $10 million in a project in Oakley. When I put in advertising to hire employees, I had 78 people in the first day. I do the same thing in the city of Antioch. I don't get zero response. Nobody wants to work in the city of Antioch. Nobody wants to work in my stores because they get beat up, they get harassed, they get bruised every single day. And nothing is being done about it. Who would want to work in an establishment that people walk in, assault them every day? City of Antioch is becoming anti-business establishment. On April 5th, I received an email that city of Antioch is banning tobaccos, flavored tobacco in city of Antioch, effective 7th. I'm sitting on $28,000 worth of inventory. Would you guys want to take it? What are we going to do with that? I don't condone smoking. I have no problem with that. We could have used common sense to allow a grace period, a decent amount of grace period for those business owners to gradually phase out the products rather than sitting on that. Money doesn't grow on a tree. A decision that you make here affects business owners, therefore it affects public. Please help business owners because effectively those are the ones who will employ people, who will bring tax talks to the city, who will encourage people like me to go and spend more money in the city, establishing different businesses. Thank you.
We have Rashawn Williams, followed by Mary Rocha.
Hello again to all the council members. As you know, my name is Rashawn Williams and as I promised before, I am here again to speak about the boat RV trailers being able to be parked on our driveways. I spoke two weeks ago with Mr. Ebs and he told me that he was still waiting on numbers to come in as to how many have valid permits to park on driveways. I understood at that point that he said there were, he had received approximately 35 postcards back at that time. And speaking with him just a few moments ago today, he said that there were 1,000 permits out there and he has not received any postcards back. Also, speaking with him two weeks ago, he mentioned to me and Marlene that it is way too difficult to keep tabs on everyone who has RV boats and trailers parked in the yards. And the resources are just not there to do it in order to know whether they are the same vehicles on registered logs, I'm sorry, the same vehicles on the registration logs or different ones. He told me in his opinion, we should do away with the ordinance altogether. I am hopeful that at the next meeting, when this matter is put on the agenda, that he will still be of the same mindset and opinion that he shared with me two weeks ago. I've come up here every, to every city council meeting from the very first day that I came, which was January 25th, 2022. And as I said, I will continue to come until this matter is resolved. So I'm hoping that the city council can come together and agree to do away with the ordinance requiring permits to be, to park our legally registered vehicles that are not in violation nor are they old dilapidated vehicles parked on the driveways. As I stated before, it is not our vehicles on the driveways that is driving down the value of the city of Antioch. It is the crime, the people that do not maintain the nice curb appeals of their own residents. I know the community is trying to recall two of the staff members before me. Doing the right thing in this matter would definitely be a step in the right direction towards serving fairness to this community. I may not, I may not appear, it may not appear as though many people are showing an interest anymore in appearing on this matter in person, but rest assured, they are all still chiming in and talking about it. I am the spokesperson for the community members who support this change and I am speaking on all of our behalf on this matter to have this matter put back on the agenda. Once the matter is on the agenda, you will see all those faces again that have appeared in person and those who appeared via Zoom from their homes. I thank you for my time and look forward to seeing this issue on the agenda on April 22nd and the matter voted on to bring the resolution, this resolution in our favor. Thank you.
We have Mary Rocha, followed by Ken Turnage. Oh, okay. Are you guys all speaking under yours?
No, each one of us has three points. Except we're going to start with Betty. Betty will be our main speaker. I will second then.
Okay, so then we're gonna have Betty Smith, followed by Mary Rocha, followed by Ken Turnage.
Betty Smith.
That's right. Thank you, mayor, council member, and also staff. Thank you for having us and I didn't know so much trouble was about us. And I thought I'd have good news, but today is not good news, but love you anyway. I'm Betty Smith, the executive director and manager for Delta 2000, the Antioch Resource Center. And I'm here on behalf of representing Delta 2000. Delta 2000 has been providing nonprofit, nonprofit support to over 30, for over 33 years. Since 1989, Delta 2000 has assisted more than 86 grassroots organizations to incorporate their organization, their organizations and pursue, to pursue a 5103 tax exempt status with the IRS. Delta 2000 has been created to help people who help their communities. Delta 2000 serves as a, serve as a, don't you just love like, okay, breathe. Delta 2000 serve as a project manager for the city property. And we provide affordable rent for nonprofits in the Antioch area and also East County. I'm just gonna give you a list of the nonprofits that are within the building. Delta 2000, Community for Violent Solution, Antioch River Town Jamboree, the community, the Center for Human Development, Elderly Wish, East County Senior Coalition, Papa Patty, Rivertown Community Radio Station, Echo Housing, Torres Unitis, Family Purpose, Mission Possible, Community Development Center, Kewanda Club of the Delta, Empowerment Program Supporting the LGBTQ Youth, Prison From the Inside and Out, Village Keeper, which is an African American wellness center.
Okay, next one. Thank you. My name is Mary Rocha and I was at the meeting where the city manager came to speak to us. He took, he brought in five department heads, which was a surprise to me, to let us know that it was possible that they would take over the Antioch River Resource Center, also known as the Delta 2000, that was considered the old jail, if you remember, those of you that have been here a while. And it has, my question though, I mean, here he talks about taking over the building because they're looking for space. My question is why displace 16 nonprofits that support the community when the city has a large empty building of the Necridicus? The small portion is located for the senior center, but the larger building is there. It has a little theater, it has bathrooms, it has a lot of parking. And it's operated by the city. You could consider using parts of the building for your employee needs. The programs the city would like to create would be beneficial to the seniors as well as to the communities in that location. So I think they should reconsider how by displacing these nonprofits, there's no way you could ever put them together. This is a place where they have a location where it doesn't cost them as much. And if you are thinking of displacing, they need plenty of time to consider their budgets. Because especially the person that was there the other day was saying, look at, I'm already doing my budget for next year. I need to know because I have to have time to be able to move, find a location and resettle my people. So I think that you should reconsider.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm on the board and I utilize the services at the Antioch Resource Center. Within the last 90 days, we've had over 10 undocumented members of staff tour the building. Not only one of them was able to identify themselves with a business card. We were faced with questions that were taped and a tape on our front door telling us that they were going to come and investigate our exits. We inquired our exits. If you didn't meet, you left the building. The exit they're talking about was fire. There are three of them. They came and took pictures of every room and every content of that room. I would request that they provide us with a copy of those pictures. I would also request we get a copy of Cornelius Johnson's report so that we have a chance to put our two cents into the argument. You have gone through the building, you've had a meeting and yet you can't produce one document for us. We had to produce all of our leases, sublets for our 15 nonprofits in the building and do it within 24 hours. We did that. You received it 10 o'clock on Monday. My question is, what do we get to say on our side? The building is centrally located. It provides a facility for communication of nonprofits. Our personnel are able to interact and the organizations can provide services to the community and to the region. We need a building that provides this. The building is secure and safe. We need one that allows us to meet after the hours. We need a place where we can meet after 5 o'clock because a lot of our volunteers have to work outside of the area. They have to come into Antioch to call us. And without having that location, those buildings will go. And not one of these nonprofits has a line in their budget that says relocate. The cost of stationary, the cost of telephone, the cost of relocating, these buildings, nonprofits will cease.
Next up, we have Ken Turnage, followed by Lacey Brown. So Ken Turnage, followed by Lacey Brown.
Hello, my name is Kenny Turnage and let's talk about the false narratives regarding the shrinking police force here in Antioch. This is not the great resignation as stated by Lamar Thorpe. Instead, the reason can be attributed to the toxic work environment that has been created by Lamar Thorpe, council member Torres Walker and city clerk householder. I only have three minutes. I'll be very direct. Kicking off the new council, the first action was rescinding the school resource officer grant at a time when it was needed. Next, we have an activist city clerk who orchestrated with her comrades, her words, not mine, to hold protests against multiple officers. This included a pathetic hunger strike, protesting a police chief's retirement party that resulted in arrests. Concurrently, one of those comrades is having criminal charges against them for arson of a police memorial. Next, council member Torres Walker has proven multiple times to be against police while showcasing her lack of knowledge of the actual laws. She made a nine-minute anti-Antioch police rant that needs not be repeated, mostly due to foul language. The video is on YouTube. It gets worse. Then there are shots fired at a party at her house. When police show up, she is confrontational, impedes the investigation by removing When police show up, she is confrontational, impedes the investigation by removing items from an officer's hand while threatening their job and retirement. If transparent Antioch was real, the body camera footage would have been released by now showcasing this hostile act. Had this been any other citizen, the person would have been tased and arrested like at the protested retirement party. Then there is Lamar. There is not enough time for me to speak, but I do have a list of about fifty reasons as to why you should be recalled. I will release it tomorrow with supporting articles and documents. It is, it is time the entire community realized you are nothing more than a problem profiteer who attempts to use race to push agendas while baiting people who disagree with you. I will remind the public, just seven short months ago, we were one officer shy from being fully staffed, including the overage amount of one hundred and twenty-one. So this great resignation you claim is not only propaganda, but a lie. This is the great exodus out of Antioch, which is tied directly to who you surrounded yourself with, from removing SROs to lying about notified on incidents, to grandstanding off the deaths of youth, taking photographs of crime scenes that have truths you tell during press conferences, carrying the lies of knee-to-neck to push an anti-police agenda, to withholding body cameras. You have sabotaged the Antioch Police Department, not worked with them. The last council meeting, one of your biggest supporters was pleading with you to stop drinking and driving because he needs your alliance to help him fight against our police. Those are his words, not mine. The issues people have with this lack of leadership has nothing to do with the skin that's wrapped around you. It's solely about what's inside you.
Next, we've got Lacey Brown, followed by Patricia Granados.
Hold on, everybody. Hold on, relax, people. There's no need to yell boo, boo, boo. People have a right to their opinion, whether it's misinformed or correct. And so Mr. Turnage has a right to his misinformed opinion, that's his right. Next.
Lacey Brown.
If you want to be escorted out, try me. Thank you.
I wanted to comment today to actually to respond to the very kind gentleman who spoke previously regarding holding higher standards for our politicians. And I do hold higher standards for our politicians, and I wanted to explain how and why. So, you know, the person who just spoke was actually previously from the Planning Commission. He was removed for calling the disabled and elderly dead brush that needed to be cleared by COVID to reserve resources for the rest of us. Before that, we had Mary Rocha. She was formerly on the council, and she's actually a current sitting board member of our school district. And she's currently prepared, starting on the twenty-fifth, to commit perjury in criminal court, which she's already done once, to falsely incriminate a young Muslim activist of assaulting her when she didn't, which has been conspired and organized by many of the people standing back here. Two of the council members up here should be added to that list. Lori, you know, has paid signature gatherers yelling in front of grocery stores that our mayor is a rapist. And because she put out a statement that two women accused him of sexual assault with no evidence of that, and is also using what I'm pretty sure is money from many of the people talking about the tobacco ban to pay those signature gatherers, when actually the tobacco ban was authored by her. And Mike Barbannica, actually both of them, were active members of a group on Facebook called Antioch Backs the Blue, of thousands of members of this community, many of them sitting back here as well, openly discussing vandalizing my vehicle, ripping the nose ring out of a young Muslim activist's nose and making her bleed. The gentleman who spoke before me, on his podcast, actually offered to use a megaphone to break out my teeth and make me spit out chiclets. And there were comments regarding vandalizing the mayor's home, calling Councilmember Torres Walker a monkey and the N slur, committing several crimes that they admitted to in these comments. And actually, Mike Barbannica did end up denouncing this group after we publicly released the screenshots of all of these messages. The former sitting city clerk, Arnie Simonson, was also an active member, laugh reacting to the comments about sending bullets to my home with my name on them for speaking out against the police. So I do hold higher standards for my politicians, and that's why I endorse Torres Walker, Thorpe, and Wilson. Thank you.
Patricia Granados, followed by Frank Sterling. Patty.
All right, yeah, that was kind of difficult to listen to, especially after seeing it over the last year and a half. So speaking of toxicity, to keep it real, these Antioch Backs the Blue, Lori, your people, Mike, thank you for denouncing them. Your crew took a crowbar to an activist's vehicle, and that's taking it too far. Calling and making threats to bash my brains on my own sidewalk, Mary Rocha's friends, like, that's not okay. Threats to rip out, like Lacey had mentioned, activist's nose ring to make her bleed was taking it too far. Their egging and throwing a can of soda to peaceful sit-in protesters was taking it too far. They're referring to an activist as a terrorist because of her Middle Eastern background was taking it too far. Them referring to our black elected officials as clowns and thugs and more disgusting things is taking it too far. Kenny Turnage, raise your hand, your threat to dump our DA's body in a landfill is taking it too far. It's documented and it's recorded.
Hold on. Please escort him out. Chief, out.
Threatening elected officials is not okay.
Hold on.
Oh, sorry.
Mr. City Manager? Instruct the chief to escort him out. Five minutes left.
Chief, can you have your officers escort the Mr. Turnage out, please?
All right, you have a minute and fifty-five seconds left. You can continue. Oh. I will call the role, Councilmember Torres Walker.
Present.
Councilmember Rocha.
Present.
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Barbannica.
Here.
Mayor Thorpe, here.
And Mayor Thorpe, out of an abundance of fairness, I actually did reset her clock, so.
So we're, we clocked it at one fifty-six remaining, so we're gonna give her a minute and fifty-six seconds. Thank you.
Okay, so like I was saying, these things matter. These words that people use on social media, threatening elected officials, threatening activists, threatening other community members because they want their town back, is not okay. So these wannabe militia members, AKA the Recall Clan, AKA, I call them the Ku Klux Karens if the shoe fits where it, they want their town back. They want to get rid of our mayor. They want to get rid of too much Torres Walker. They want to get rid of, that's not how things work. We voted you in because we wanted things done in the city. After the murder of George Floyd, I was like, well, what's happening in Antioch? Let's see. Come to find out, how many people have died at the hands of police in Antioch? Too many. Too many. But on a brighter note, I will vote for you, Mayor Thorpe, again. I will vote for this administration again. My elected official, Councilwoman Monica Wilson, thank you. What has happened in this administration? You all have banned the knee-to-neck. You've established body and dash cams. You've banned oil and gasoline. You've done the Meals on Wheels transitional housing. You've declared Antioch a no sideshow zone, although I loved sideshows growing up. The public apology to our Chinese immigrants, the mental health for police, the mental health crisis team for the community, our mayor's apprenticeship program, COVID vaccination mandates, the midnight youth basketball program, independent investigation on the police, Office of Public Safety, Community Resources. You've raised the pride flag. There, we have a new chief of police. That's not part of the blue line that we had. Because how many, I mean, the DOJ is not here for just because. You know, we, people made reports, unethical things that happened in Antioch that are getting investigated. So, the list goes on, but thank you.
All right, we have Frank Sterling, followed by Edgar Martinez. And then we will be moving to the ten or so comments we have on Zoom.
Hello, everyone. I'm kind of sad Kenny can't be here to hear me because I was one of the people supporting the hunger strikers out there and was out there every day. I don't even remember seeing Ellie, but once or twice, I don't think she even had nothing to do with it. But I was out there every day. And would, I don't, I forgot his words that he called it, a wasted time, a useless hunger strike. I forgot what he called it. But apparently someone agrees with us because the FBI and the district attorney are investigating the police. Why do you think we were out there? Do you think crimes of moral turpitude include me getting kicked in the face in my own house? These are things we knew already. So I'm hoping that these changes that the mayor's brought and bringing in a new chief, I'm hoping things will change in Antioch because I experienced it firsthand. And I watched the whole department lined up behind Hoffman and Kent. I'm sure you know these guys. Hoffman and Kent, officers Hoffman and Kent, the one that kicked me in the face and called me a faggot in my own house, choked me unconscious. You know, these guys don't need to be here. The great expulsion, or whatever you want to call it, get the heck out, man. We don't want these dirty cops here. We need some new blood here. And that's what a lot of this is about. Because they don't want things changing for the better in here. You think the cops are just all great people? They're human beings just like everybody else. Some are good and some are bad. And if we can't clean out these guys that are gonna kick people in the face, like me, or like Kenny wanted to talk about zapping some guy that wasn't resisting arrest. These are the changes we need. And if that doesn't feel good to some people, I don't know what the problem is. You know? There's so much more to say about it. When she mentioned George Floyd, we got Rakim Rutz that just died in two thousand and fifteen. If someone would have done something in two thousand and nine when they choked me unconscious and kicked me in the face and called me a faggot, maybe Rakim would be alive. Maybe he wouldn't have got choked to death. And then nothing happened. Yeah, and what'd he talk about, a fake knee on the neck? Come on, man. We saw the, the video. Basically, a dead guy getting pulled out of his house with chest compressions. They killed the guy, Angelo Quinto. They could have some fake-ass coroner's inquest. We all know that's police investigating police, and we know how that goes around here. We know how that goes around here. So I'll spend my last thirty seconds with Betty from Delta Two Thousand. I'm a resident of that building. I haven't done a lot over there, and I hope that the organizations that are actually doing good work there can remain in part of this new department, or something good can be done to help those folks that are actually doing work in town. I'm gonna vote for these guys against the ones in my district and the mayor. Because like Kenny said, I do need them to get the, these guys out. And if we want to break down that blue wall of silence and do something about the ones that are in there, then I hope that the ones that are there start ratting on the ones that are in there.
Thank you.
Edgar Martinez. And then we are going to move. I'm gonna go with Edgar, and then we're gonna move, Miriam's gonna be at first on Zoom.
Good evening, everyone. Wow, it's very, very intense today. I just have four things I want to talk about, and maybe hopefully, if I have time, to talk about the apartment concern that was brought up today. Number one is mayor's apprenticeship program. I want to ensure that there is diversity and equity, that there, oh, go ahead.
It's on the agenda, so I have to.
Oh, okay, I didn't know that. Sales Tax Committee, hopefully that, awesome. I really appreciate the, the statistics that were provided in that, the last city council meeting. I want to, one of the things I didn't notice was the geolocations of where those crimes occurred. I think that if those, if we're providing statistical data on the crimes and the cause that were provided, then I think the public should also be informed as to where those crimes occurred and that were actually responded to. I think that gives us an area of focus that we can focus on. Gives us more transparency to the public as far as, you know, what's going on around the city. Number three is, this was item, item O of last city council meeting, the unhoused resident services amendment consulting services agreement. So I want to give credit to the city of Antioch for addressing homelessness. I got a chance to talk to Jamie Jeanette, Masters of Public Health, who is a community engagement specialist at the Health and Housing Home Services with Contra Costa Health Services. I wasn't aware, until I did my, my own research, spent my own work time, you know, that I had, that I had on breaks to investigate. I wasn't aware that here in Contra Costa County, many, many of the cities leave it up to the county to address the homelessness. So I kind of wonder what exactly were the past city councils, not just in Antioch, but in East Contra Costa County, doing exactly to address this? Homelessness has only increased, you know, I don't know how much, but. Homelessness has only increased, you know, I don't know how much, but it's, it's gone crazy. So I wanna give you guys credit for that. There's still a lot of work to be done. Um, I wasn't aware of that, so I'm happy that, uh, for example, the hotels were something that were, that was done. I wanna make, emphasize that a core team is needed. Um, so hopefully in future budget, budgeting, we can, um, put some budget toward a core team. The city of Pittsburgh, from when I spoke to Jamie Jeanette, is partnering with the, with Contra Costa, um, county to develop their own core team. So why can't we? Uh, the other thing I wanna talk about is Police Department. The Concord City Council held a meeting on Saturday to understand resident needs. They talked about economic development. Uh, why can't we also hold these types of special meetings for the second-largest city in Antioch? Um, and that's it. Right now, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we are moving to Zoom. So Miriam. I know we have Rochelle Pierre. So Miriam, you should be able to unmute yourself. Say yes. All right, you should be able to unmute. Okay, let's move to Rochelle Pierre.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Alrighty. Good evening, mayor and city council. My name is Rochelle Pierre. I'm a resident of Antioch. I'm a member of East County Regional Group, and I am a voter, and I voted for the members of the city council and the mayor. As a parent, all need a safe place to call home where we can cook healthy meals, help our children with, with their schoolwork, and have peace of mind to go to our jobs. The problem is too many families in Antioch are struggling to stay in their homes. I come before you tonight because back in January, the city council asked tenant protection ordinance to be back on the agenda. It's now April and we're still waiting. My one bedroom is eighteen hundred dollars. I have to pay, I have to work two jobs just to pay the rent. Parents like me have to make choices like, should I pay my rent, put gas in my car, pay my PG&E, buy food, or buy clothes for my children, for my son, and for our children? We spend way too much in rent. Emergencies expenses for me, like rotating my tires or getting my tires fixed, are so costly because I often have to pay, use payday loans because I don't have enough money because my rent is so high. As a tenant, eviction is something I always fear. Many, I've been homeless before, and many other residents of Antioch, over three hundred, have been evicted with unjust cause. My traumatic experience with homelessness is something that I never wanna go through again, and I don't want other families to have to go through it. We need our elected officials to adopt policies to keep Antioch families housed. We need rent control now. We need just cause laws now. We need anti-harassment protections now. I love Antioch, and I don't wanna uproot myself from the city. I'm speaking to you, I'm urging you elected officials today to put this back on the council so we can discuss this and we can get these ordinance put in place. The families of Antioch are counting on you now. Thank you very much for your time.
Next up, we have Jackie Lowery.
Thank you. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes. Uh, first off, I'd like to say, uh, the amazing last few speakers. I'm, I'm really, really brought some emotion about myself, to me, coming to the, you know, forefront. Um, I'd also like to say racism has no business or no place, not only in our city, but anywhere in this country. So that has to go. And I fully support you, Mayor Thorpe, and Tumisha Torres Walker. Good evening, my name is Jackie Lowery. I'm a resident of Antioch and a member of ACE. For months and months, the renters of Antioch have let, that, let their voices be heard. We shared our experiences bringing here. You heard the negatives and positives of anti-harassment, just cause, and rent control, and how that would look like in our city. We patiently waited a very, very long time, and we are now in the month of April. It's time. It's time to pass the protections. I know your job isn't easy, Mayor Thorpe, and not everyone on the city council will agree with you, but you have to do what's right. Helping the people who voted you in is what's right. Helping the renters who experience landlord harassment, rent increases, and homelessness is the right thing to do. Let's finally put this to a vote once and for all. It's time for Antioch to have anti-harassment, just cause, and rent control. God bless and thank you.
Next up, we have Francisco Torres.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, I just wanna repeat what was said, um, behavior like that is, is not a place for the city council, nor for any other place. And, um, those on the city council, stay strong and continue doing the work that you guys have been doing. Um, I'm a community organizer for ACE, and I have a lot of members in Antioch. And it's getting to the time where it's starting to get frustrating. Um, March thirty-first was, was the end of the Rent Relief Program, ERAP, as it's called in the state of California. We were able to extend it for three months. But that's just for people who needed, uh, who hadn't applied for ERAP. So they have three months, um, to get some help. My members who, uh, finished in March, on April first, got their evictions. So what you're seeing is people starting to get evictions and, um, and it's starting to get a lot. I was hearing some of the comments, some of the people were saying, some of the renters were saying how they don't wanna be homeless again. And you'd be surprised how many of my members have been homeless before and are now about to be homeless again. And that's not what Antioch should be. You, the city council, could stop this. You, the city council, could help children stay in their homes. Um, one of my members was talking about that her and her husband have to, have to not eat food so there's food enough for their children. That's, this is not what Antioch should be about. I think, uh, the speaker before me said everything, uh, that needs to be said. The right thing has to be done. This, this has been going on too long. Um, they were, the tenants were hurting during the pandemic, during COVID. Uh, and, and now it's supposedly over? No, it's not. Still struggling to, to make ends meet. And a lot of them moved here because it was inexpensive. But now they consider this home, and they like it, as you can see. People don't wanna move. They, they made their roots here, and they wanna stay here. Antioch has been good to them, and they've been good to Antioch. So please, uh, think about what needs to be done to get these rent protections, whether it's rent control, just cause, anti-harassment, or all three. Antioch needs to be a healthy city for everybody, and you guys, city council, Mayor Thorpe can do that. Thank you very much.
Next up, we have Deborah Polk.
Hi, just wanna make sure you can hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, uh, mayor and city council and staff. My name is Deborah Polk, an Antioch resident and a proud member of the East County Regional Group. As a group, we all value children and families having basic necessities like a roof over their head. Last year, during the COVID-nineteen pandemic, ECRG surveyed over one thousand residents of Antioch, and I wanna highlight three very important results from the survey. Two-thirds of Antioch residents are struggling to pay their rent or their mortgage. Half of survey respondents shared that housing affordability is a major concern for their families. Eighty-six percent of respondents support limiting annual rent increases. I support the following policies for Antioch renters. I support rent control, just cause for evictions, and an anti-harassment policy. I've been a landlord for over twenty-five years, and I wholeheartedly support these policies because Antioch families need to have access to safe and affordable places to live. I've lived in Antioch for almost seven years now, and I've noticed an increase in the number of unhoused individuals and families in our town. Antioch now has the highest eviction rate in the Bay Area, exceeding eviction rates in larger cities like San Francisco and Oakland. As our leaders in Antioch, you need to act now by implementing these three policies to protect families. It's horrifying to hear what's happening to the families at Twin Creek Apartments. A nine percent increase is outrageous. This is on top of major habitability concerns and not having basic functioning that all tenants need. The worst about this is that Twin Creek's tenants are not alone. There are many other tenants across Antioch also receiving increases, harassment, and even eviction notices. The time is now for you to take action. We have been asking for action for months. We urge you to schedule this item for the next city council meeting agenda. You must do your job and protect our most vulnerable, and that being our children. Thank you for your time.
Next up, we have Katie Felch.
Hi, I would like to, um, uh, wait, where am I talking to Andrew Becker?
Okay, dokey. So, uh, Andrew Becker. So I'm going to start off three minutes, which is, um, the time that was just yielded to you, and then I'll let that elapse and then press three minutes again. Sorry, I should've given you permission to talk. Okay. You should be able to talk now.
Thank you, I can't hear me.
Yes.
Uh, thank you. Thank you for your time tonight. I, uh, am reaching out tonight in public comments. I know there's been a lot of comments tonight in a lot of different directions. Uh, and I, I wanted to say as a community member, it's great to hear the community speak up and, and to be a part of, um, hopefully, uh, finding, problem-solving and finding solutions to a lot of these issues Antioch has been dealing with. And, and tonight, you know, I wanted to speak on the housing issue, um, here in the city. And, and I know that a lot of the last few comments, um, have been speaking on tenant rights and the housing instability in our community. And, uh, I, I wanted to speak on behalf of the unhoused residents here in our community that, that are not at risk of being homeless. They, they are homeless. They are out on our streets. They are struggling to find resources and support, and it is not an atypical situation. This is a systemic issue that is swept across our region and is continuing to grow. In Alameda County, between two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and twenty, there were eight hundred and nine documented deaths of unhoused individuals. Of those individuals, the average unhoused person past lifespan was fifty-two years old versus the average Alameda County resident's lifespan of seventy-five. People were dying from heart disease, liver disease, cancer, followed by substance abuse and overdoses. Eighty-two people died in accidents, including thirty-three people who were hit by vehicles while walking or bicycling, twelve who were struck by trains, five who drowned, three who succumbed to hypothermia, and two who died of carbon monoxide. These statistics show that unhoused residents in the cit, in, in our community are a hundred, are a hundred and four times more likely to be hit by a train, are nearly forty-five times more likely to be hit by a car, and are nearly eight times more likely to die by other accidental injuries. These are drastic numbers. These are individuals who need our support and our voice and direction. And that is what our council stands to do for our community here in Antioch. And when we talk about our council's actions, I wanted to start by thanking councilmember Tumisha Torres Walker for coming out and visiting a community that California modular built for the city of San Jose.
All right, starting the clock for three minutes, Andrew.
Thank you. Back in twenty-twenty, this is an incredible community that houses over a hundred individuals. I reached out to all council members and our mayor to come in to visit this community. Councilmember Barbannika, you spoke at a previous meeting and said that you needed to be a part of discussions for any actions in your district, that you needed to be a part of discussions for Home Key to be able to support them here in our community. Your district houses an incredible number of our unhoused individuals. And I have been reaching out to you for weeks to simply talk to you about these solutions and to offer you an invitation to come out to this community. Whereas your colleague, councilmember Torres Walker, responded timely and took her time to come out to San Jose, meet with the Supportive Services Agency CEO, and visit this incredible community and its residents. I couldn't even get you on the phone for a simple invitation. We hear that this is not an issue. We've heard residents come up and say that they have reached out to councilmembers and they cannot get ahold of you. We understand that your time is precious. And as you say, you cannot pick up every phone call because my conversations typically turn into longer than five minutes. Problem-solving for housing here in our community will be longer than five-minute conversation. It will take time. It will take your support. It will take your insightfulness. And, and most important, your drive in bringing these projects to fruition. We need you all to step up. We've talked about Home Key and what it means. Here we are, April twelfth, less than thirty days away from that deadline for the Home Key Round Two application. When will somebody step up and say, let's get this done? When will somebody step up and say, let's see what these communities look like? Because we all wanna stand up and talk about what this, what this systemic problem is doing to our community and what the blight looks like. But we don't wanna talk about solutions. To hear individuals in Alameda County are dying from hypothermia here in California, we need to step up and talk about this. And for you, councilmember Barbannika, your daytime job is housing here in our community. I wanna finish with the last eight seconds because nobody here at this council has talked about our Housing Element Community Engagement tomorrow. To our community members, please participate, seven to eight-thirty PM. Thank you.
We have our last speaker for this section, which is, uh, hopefully this will work, Miriam Señez. You should be able to unmute.
Good evening, mayor and city council. My name is Miriam Señez, resident of Antioch, a mother and secretary for the County Regional Group. The East County Regional Group is a parent of group who advocate for healthy, safe, and equitable community for children and families. Having a defined and safe place to live is essential for our kids. Anyas families are suffering, living in an expensive, inexpensive, and unhealthy condition. As myself, I had issue in my home. I have the same carpet since we moved in seven years ago. I have never been replaced or cleaned, even through I as many times. After my children, and I start having allergies and breathing problem, I decide to paint the carpet by myself. And now the landlords, the landlords said they will replace the carpet, but they will mean increase my rent. Many families are similar situation. They have problem with lead or mold, which cause serious health issues. Tenants do not feel safe in their home. Rent increases has caused many family to share rooms with other or move, move out of the state. It is not fair that family have to go to this extreme. We all want to live in Antioch, where no child had to fear being evicted, where every child has a safe place and a stable place to live. I am here tonight because our housing crisis is urgent, is need action. We have been here many times asking council to take action. When will we pass the policy to protect tenants? When? We, or you bring back the rent... We, or you bring back the rent control, just cause, and anti harassment policy to the next council meeting to pass them right away. Please, pass it right away. Thank you so much and have a wonderful night.
And then we got another person with their hand raised.
Okay, this is the last one.
Carmen Ponce. All right, you should be able to unmute now, Carmen.
Buenas noches.
Good evening.
Uh, yo solamente hablo español.
Si, yo voy a, um, trans, trans.
Muchas gracias.
So, no hable tan rápido porque, uh, voy a tener que decir lo que usted dice.
Buenas noches, miembros del consejo y buenas noches, señor acalde. Uh, mi nombre es Carmen Ponce.
Good evening, uh, mayor and council. My name is Carmen Ponce.
Uh, soy, uh, miembro de ACE y tengo tres años viviendo aquí en Aniak.
I'm a member of ACE and I've been living here for three years.
Y estoy aquí, señor acalde, para, para pedirle protección para desalojar.
I'm here, Mr. Mayor, to ask you, uh, for protection, uh, against, um, uh, evictions.
Y para control de renta.
For rent control.
Uh, desde que empezó la, la pandemia, este, yo fui una de las afectadas en quedarme sin trabajo. Uh, yo trabajo en un salón de belleza.
Since the pandemic started, I was affected by, um, by, um, by, uh, losing my job. I work in a, a beauty salon.
Y, y casi estuvimos dos años cerrados consecutivamente. Se nos estuvo cerrando varias veces el salón de belleza.
And for.
Y por, disculpe.
And for two years, we were closed. We opened a few times and then we had to close one back again. So for over two years, they've been, uh, closed.
Y por medio de esa situación, señor acalde, uh, mi situación económica fue empeorando que, uh, yo no podía pagar mi renta.
And as a result of that, uh, my situation became worse, uh, and I wasn't able to pay my rent.
Uh, tengo meses atrasados de renta.
I have months, uh, that, that I'm behind in on, uh, on rent.
Y he sido acosada por el, por el dueño del apartamento queriéndome sacar de aquí donde yo vivo.
And I have been harassed by the apartment owner. He's been trying to get me out of this apartment that I'm currently in.
Uh, ya he recibido dos notificaciones, señor acalde, para desalojar el apartamento donde yo vivo.
I have received two notification, official notifications that have asked me to, uh, to vacate the apartment that I'm currently in.
Y es por eso, por la razón, señor acalde, que me escuchen, que de verdad que necesitamos mucho de su ayuda para que pueda hacer algo por nosotros, por la comunidad de Aniak, señor acalde.
And for that reason, we're, uh, we're, uh, asking you, Mr. Mayor, and the city council, uh, to do something about, uh, these situations that exist in the city of Aniak. Uh, so we're asking you to look at these issues.
Y que de verdad tomen cuenta mis palabras. Ojalá les lleguen a corazón a cada uno de ustedes, del miembro del consejo, de usted, señor acalde, por, por la realidad en la que estamos viviendo aquí en la comunidad de Aniak de desalojos.
Yeah, and she hopes that we take her concerns serious and that we find in our hearts to find a way to, uh, to resolve these issues, particularly with eviction. And I forgot the last word.
No hay un solo día, una sola noche, señor acalde, que yo no esté tranquila del simple hecho de pensar que puedan desalojarme de aquí del apartamento. Es un miedo que tengo todos los días.
There is a, there isn't a day, the, day and night, uh, I worry about being evicted from this apartment.
Uh, quiero decir.
Sorry, I forgot what she said, the last part.
Quiero, quiero decirles que apenas tengo, uh, tres meses.
I want to ask you that I have three months.
Que he podido pagar mi renta bien como debe de ser porque empecé a trabajar, uh, bien.
That I have been able to pay my rent because I started working again.
Pero tengo meses atrasados de renta, por la cual, es por eso que he sido acosada por parte del dueño.
But I still, but I still have, uh, a few months rent in which I'm behind as a result of the pandemic and which is why I'm currently being evicted.
Apliqué para la ayuda del estado y es la esperanza que tengo para que se me pueda pagar esta renta.
I asked, I applied for state help and I have hoped that, uh, this will be able to help me.
Pero aún, pero aún así el dueño no ha respetado esa protección que yo tengo, por la cual él me ha querido sacar de aquí.
But the owner of the apartment building has not, uh, been able to, um, respect the fact that I've applied for this funding. Uh, and that's why I'm concerned that I'm going to be evicted from here.
Uh, soy mamá soltera, señor acalde, uh, tengo a mi hija que está en high school.
I'm a single mom and I have a daughter who's in high school.
Y tengo una nieta de un año.
And I have a one-year-old granddaughter.
Si ellos lograran su objetivo de sacarme de aquí, yo no tendría dónde irme, señor acalde.
If the landlord was able to meet his objective to get, remove me from my apartment, I don't know where I would be able to go.
Y es por eso que estoy aquí para implorarles de, de su ayuda y mi esperanza.
And that is the reason I'm here today to implore you, uh, to do something about this.
Y mi esperanza está en ustedes, en la decisión de ustedes.
And my hope is with, uh, all you members of the council.
Y muchas gracias y que pasen buenas noches.
Thank you and have a good evening.
And that concludes our public comment for this section.
All right. Thank you very much for that and thank you to.